Good evening and welcome to the June 23 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are here with us tonight spread out and those that are not here that are watching on TV, we're glad to have you in our midst as well. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as Amanda Moore will lead us in the pledge followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious things, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence. All right, I would ask the board members, you have seen the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? I'm sorry, Mr. Ringstaff.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that two items be added to the other business section. I would like to ask that a budget amendment that we will need to get approved tonight be added to the other business and also a topic of to rename the Teacher Learning Center.
All right. Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as with the two added items on the other business?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second, Ms. Barton.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, consent items. Have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items. Approval of the differentiated pay plan.
Yes, sir. Last year and then again this year, we asked that we all, every year, we have to do a differentiated pay plan for the state of Tennessee and it's got to be done by June 30th. And it is harder for us to get sixth grade teachers for the last two years than any other classification of teacher, certified teachers. And the reason is they changed the endorsement. It used to be K-8, then K-6, now it's K-5 and 6'8". K-5 teachers, if they get their endorsement in K-5, they do the student teaching either between kindergarten and fifth grade and they do not feel comfortable in teaching sixth grade. If they get certified teaching 6th through 8th, they really want a middle school setting. So it's tougher for us to get sixth grade teachers than any other teachers. So I'm asking you to approve this differentiated pay plan to give a bonus, a signing bonus of $2,000 to new sixth grade teachers hired or transferred to sixth grade.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
How many do we expect to have to, I mean, how many do we need for sixth grade?
We will probably hire about three or four teachers, sixth grade teachers or transferred teachers to the sixth grade this year. That's our estimate. So that will cost us about $8,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, I vote to approve.
All right, Ms. Barton makes a motion to approve the differentiated pay plan. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, reports and information, personnel reports?
Yes, sir. Tonight, state law says that we need to have a tentative assignment list by June 15th of each year. And that's basically what I've given you, a tentative assignment list. It's a, they're all together and in August, we're going to give you a more comprehensive report with the list of colleges that each new hire attended, number of years' experience and so forth. It's a pretty extensive report. Also lists so far the resignations, retirement terminations and the new hires.
Do you know how many retirements we had? I just wondered since we didn't get to have the reception.
Very many. We didn't have very many. I know the administrative team at Northfield retired and maybe two or three other teachers retired.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, have a second?
Second.
Ms. Goff, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Tentative assignment list?
That's what you just.
It's just what we've done.
Personnel.
Oh, the assignment list, it's a list of each certified personnel at each school. We haven't done the EAs yet. We'll do that in August. We'll have a complete list in August.
All right. We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Revenue and expenditure report?
Yes, good evening, Board. Our revenue expenditure report is we have $3,195,146 to the good at this time is our net income. On our revenue side, property taxes are up $1,236,000 over what was projected for us from last year because obviously we didn't know what the tax increase would do, so that was, that was good news. But our sales tax is short $467,000, so obviously the property tax is making up for the shortfall in the sales tax. Overall, we know that our April, our March and April sales came in actually higher than we thought they would, which is good news.
Yeah.
We're waiting for May. I was really worried about April's, but it came in, came in very strong. So we're, we're feeling good about that. So overall, budgetarily, we're still in limbo, not knowing anything. We have three more sales tax months to collect and put on the report, just the way that when we receive sales tax, it always comes two months late, so we're always behind on that. So overall, you know, we think we're going to be okay when we end this year. Moving forward, if I, if I could, I'd like to mention about the CARES Act. If that's okay?
That's fine, yes, sir.
We received word today that they approved our CARES Act proposal. The total of the CARES Act is $1,269,000. Of that, we had to give private schools 105,794, approximately 8%. Really need to thank Sherri Arnett and Becky Sally for putting together the CARES Act and submitting it and Mr. Joe Marlin and Tyra Murray. They worked diligently with the private schools and the private schools, as you know, is kind of in our control but out of our control. We have to do the, do the leg form and, and Joe and Tyra took care of that. So with this approval now, we can do some good things, whether the, the actual application, like I said, was approved today, $982,000 goes into instruction. So that's a tremendous amount. So we're real pleased, we're real excited. We celebrate today about the CARES Act being approved, so we're ready, ready to move on that and it'll help us out quite a bit.
Thank you, sir. Good news. I'd have a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure report?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Okay. Update on reopening of schools?
Well, this is a topic that we could probably discuss for a couple of hours, but in the interest of time and I've been threatened if we talk too long about it. But we're going to give a more comprehensive report on July the 14th at our next board meeting. But tonight, I would like to give a timeline so the public will know about it. In the next day or two, Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to do an employee survey. We'll send out a survey for all employees, full-time employees who have a city school email address and we're going to get their thoughts on several items. July the 6th, we're going to send out another parent survey. It's going to be a little bit more detailed. It's going to ask which school their children attend, bus rider, things like that. So it's going to be a more comprehensive survey, not much more, but the deadline will be July 10th. We're going to compile the information on July 13th and then present to the board on July the 14th, our recommendation. Now, if we, our goal is to open up with modifications, as normal as possible with modifications, such as taking the temperature. Child enters a bus, take their temperature. Child enters a school, take their temperature and maybe again later on during the school day. First grade classrooms needed to stay down at the first grade hallway as much as possible. Separate the grade levels as much as possible. Not eating, no eating in the cafeteria starting out. We'll be eating in the classroom. We'll have to have EAs, possibly some teachers leaving, other teachers so they can get their duty-free lunch. That's just some of the modifications. I know that we'll have maybe 15 to 20% of parents who are nervous sending their children back to school early on, so we're going to have to do remote distance learning with those individuals. And Sandy Shealy has informed me that we must provide those individuals lunch, offer them lunch.
Must provide who?
Those students who are distance learning.
Wow.
So the first month, she's let me know today that we can ask them to come to the school to pick up lunch, but after that, we may have to deliver those meals. So we hope over a period of time, those parents can feel more and more comfortable sending their children to school. Transportation is also going to be a big issue. Are we going to be able to do one per seat or one to every other seat? How many routes are we going to take? Gary and I talked, had a long conversation about that today and got April involved as well. So I know that you're getting a lot of questions. Please forward those questions to us. So by July the 14th, we'll have answers. Yes?
I, too, I mean, I can't remember if we've said this, but masks, I've had several parents ask me of children, we're going to be required to wear a mask.
It is our goal not to require children to wear masks.
Optional.
If the parent sends a mask, then the, then the student can wear it. Teachers will not be required to wear masks unless, if they're doing arrival or dismissal, it's probably best that they wear a mask, but when they're teaching, sometimes it's a hindrance.
Not, not sometimes. It would be all the time.
Nice.
Sorry. I mean.
It, it doesn't really matter what you present to us on July the 14th. I mean, well, I'm.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Campbell. We can just keep the meeting moving.
It, it does matter what you present us, but I think we all have to understand that those things could change overnight.
And we're going to be ready for anything that changes. And I'll tell you this, I got a question today. What parameters? Okay, we'll open up full speed. At what, at what point do we shut down? What point do we go hybrid? Some school systems are making some measurements, like 0.5% of the total population of the county. If they get, if they're underneath 0.5, then they're normal with modifications. If it's between 0.5 and 1%, then they go to hybrid. If it's over 1%, they go to virtual learning, distance learning. Those are some of the percentages that some school districts are using. Rutherford County, in their workshop session last week, they're not using any parameters. I really don't want to use county, county numbers. I wish that we could separate Murfreesboro numbers, but as of right now, I have been told that they don't separate. They just do it by county.
And will those numbers be the 0.5 or whatever the number we arrive at that we'd use, are those numbers going to be substantiated by the, I mean, are we talking about tests?
Active cases.
Active cases? So they're reported to their doctor or they're, they're at hospital, something that says, yes, this is, this person has COVID-19?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's so many, I mean, right now, one of the things that all of us are struggling with is like, oh, I think everyone, I am, is, is the fact that you've got so many experts and so many different ways to report and so many different types of centers, you know, you've got CDC and you've got our Rutherford County Health and you've got all the other county, other health inputters. You know, that's a lost ball in high weeds and maybe it's me that's lost in the highway.
No.
From what I've been told, and I just know this because I've been working in a doctor's office, but from what I've been told, one of our patients may be diagnosed somewhere else and therefore would not count as somebody from our practice. It would count from whoever diagnosed them, be it the health department, wherever. Now, if, if that's the case, then there shouldn't be any duplication, but you know, but who knows?
What, what did, Rosier, what if, and you mentioned that and I'll ask you because you are in that business now. What, what happens, for example, that a person is diagnosed, Wes is diagnosed in Cannon County?
He counts as Cannon County, Cannon County.
We don't.
So you talk about those numbers in Florida, they're so elevated. Well, guess why? There are people from all over the United States in Florida, or at least all over the southeast. So yeah, you, you're reported as to where you're diagnosed.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Just a couple of questions. I, I like the idea of us going ahead and planning some sort of parameters and having that in place, so we're not trying to make these decisions without any sort of guidance. I don't know if those numbers are the right ones to use, but, but I like that idea, both for if we find ourselves in a position where we're considering whether we have to close and if we do, then finding ourselves in a position where we're deciding when it's, when it's safe to reopen. So I, I think it would make a lot of sense to do that kind of planning now if we can.
Okay.
Another question I have is how, what's the level of restriction where if we did have an outbreak in one school, would the whole district have to close or could we move what, just one school online and other schools stay open?
That's a very good question. Sarah, can you come up and, I know that if we get, let's say, a first grade class, one child is diagnosed with COVID, then that whole class has to be quarantined, but I don't think the whole school does, but I'll let Sarah answer that.
I think that's really going to depend on how many cases we have. So if we get one, Johnny calls and says, hey, or mom calls and says, we just diagnosed positive COVID. We can track where that child's been and who that child's been around and if we keep the schools contained enough, grade level class, we can just pull that class and work with instruction, put them directly online. So it won't have to be at, you know, first with one case, the whole district. We are working to not do that.
Thank you.
It seemed like I read somewhere that some district can, that if, if a school, like if you had a case in a school, then they might quarantine that school, but not the whole system.
Correct.
Is that?
Correct.
A possibility?
Yes, sir.
I had another question about buses.
Okay.
And I'm sure you and Gary have looked at it 20 different ways, but if everybody that rides a bus now needed bus transportation, is it even possible for us to do it with adding a bell time? I mean, I don't want to have to do that, but I'm just looking at worst-case scenario. And I know you said several parents said they could possibly, and I would think there are some parents that, given the choice of providing transportation or not going back, may potentially find a way to provide transportation.
And also, some parents are going to be nervous about putting their child on the bus.
That's true, too.
At the beginning of the school year.
Yeah.
85% of the parents stated to the question, if you are encouraged to provide transportation for your child instead of riding a bus, could you do it? And 85% of them said yes. Now, Gary, would you like to talk more about the transportation?
Yes. April's Visa is sending out a survey to all the people who have indicated that they are bus riders. Roughly, we have like 46, 4700 that indicate it, but we don't transport that many every day. They just say they're going to be a bus rider just in case they decide to ride. So April's sending out a survey to all those parents. We will then know where they live, if they are or they're not. If they do not respond, I've already contacted transportation, they're going to call everyone who does not respond. That way, we can build routes around that. We do not expect everyone to be riding the bus. There'll be a tremendous drop-off. If we go with one child per seat, which seems to be the, what people are using today, or if you have a family that live together, you can put three kids per seat, then we can actually establish the routes once we know who is going to ride and who's not. So that's what we're looking at and we are planning to take their temperature when they come on the bus. We, if they have a temperature and we can't tell them, you know, mom's not there, obviously we're going to isolate them to the front, they're going to be escorted into the school and go to an area of the school that we've set up that will be quarantined from the rest and then we can call mom or dad to come, come pick the child up. Transportation is one of those things that if we can't, if we can't get the kids to school, we can't have schools. So we're really trying to dig deep into that to get a good, accurate numbers, accurate as we can get.
You know, that's a great point about families, though. I mean, if they're living together, they can surely share a seat. And we have so many that are there, you know, as two or three in a family, so.
It could be 40 to 50 to a bus.
Yeah, as opposed to 85, whatever.
Do we have any financial compensation extra from the state for any of this?
No. Just the CARES Act and that is, doesn't for that.
Okay.
So no. And districts are talking about how much more expensive it's going to be to run transportation and to run a smaller class if they had to. So yeah, it, it's a concern for everybody.
And then another concern would be for the number of parents who are transporting their children to school, dismissal and pickup, because we have schools now that are lined up 75 and 80 cars in the afternoon to pick up and that's with full transportation provided.
We'll have to do multiple pickup areas just for social distancing purposes and time sensitive.
Gosh, and with, I mean, I'm thinking about, some of them only have X amount of entrances, so would you almost do a wave of dismissal, you know, like, almost like what we used to do when we called them, you know, 2:55, 3:05.
Yeah.
Gosh.
But then you'll still have parents who are going to be dismissed at 3:05 or be in line at 1:30.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
I know. I see it every day. But anyway, okay.
Question, Mr.?
Amanda?
How are we feeling about the, any changes in technology? If we do have to move a class or something or a whole school or the whole district online for some time this year? I know we had some issues with the bandwidth, just to put all these kids online in the spring. How are we looking for changes in case that comes up again this year?
Mr. Anderson, you'll take this?
In the CARES Act, we put in for more computers and Kajit, which is like the size of your phone, that is, is wireless. The problem that every district's going to have is Metro ordered 99,000 computers and they kind of got in the hopper. So we're, we're trying to get, jump in and get it right now. If we have to go online, we need these products to make it happen. We do have our schools that, two of our schools right now are already wired so they can pull up in the parking lot. In our, in the grant that we got from the E-Rate, every school will be that way, that they can pull up in the parking lot and get right into our internet. So that's, we're looking, it's timing right now because everybody's jumping in at the same time.
And also, we're looking into having buses go into the neighborhoods with hotspots on the buses and so the children who don't have access, they can get on the bus or get around, even around the bus and go through the neighborhoods.
You mentioned that money for maybe the equipment, yeah. So if you don't mind, I think that people at home would really like to know, too, what can we spend COVID CARES money on?
It's broken out into separate categories and in that, we have some instruction stuff. We have, we have things like UV filters, we have the great gowns, mask gloves, thermometers, radios for communication, we have disinfectant, we have the stuff for computers, for the Kajits, those type of things that we can have in, in the program. That's what we got in there.
Okay. But it can't be used for, I'm sorry, transportation? Like if we had to pay bus drivers more money or we can't use it for anything like that, right? I mean, I know we've already got it all spent now, but I'm just asking.
Yet the state was really pushing hard that we look at assets.
Okay.
Rather than salaries.
Yeah.
And expenses like that.
Okay.
We have two members of our board who are ill and not with us tonight, but I've got a question from one, from Mr. LaRoche, says, would you please ask Ralph if we have been getting together extra hand sanitizers and cleaning supplies for the classrooms?
We have already received a product that will, has a 24-hour lasting effect on hard surfaces. We already have, we started, we used it today in those, before the meetings, that it's sanitizing, it takes care of, takes care of COVID, it takes care of many different things and we got that. We also have hand sanitizer, it's all in the CARES Act and the market now is getting more and more of those products that's quicker than, the reason we have problems with computers and technology is because they shut down the plants in China where they make the chips and so they couldn't get them. Everything's backlogged on that. But yes, we have those in, in the CARES Act. We have some in-house already. We've got, we got thermometers today. We've got 240 thermometers, you know, touchless thermometers they came in. And so, yeah, we're getting all the stuff geared up so we can roll right away with these things.
Okay. Thank you.
As you can see, this is a team effort. On July 14th, I'm going to ask Gary to talk about the support areas and then Sherri Arnett will talk about the instructional day, Joe Marlin will talk about the school counselors, Sandy may talk about nutrition. It is a team effort. We meet two or three, four times a week and it's always new conversations and, oh my gosh, we hadn't thought about this, or something like that. And so we're continuously brainstorming and trying to come up with the best recommendation for Murfreesboro City Schools. And if you get questions or if you think of questions, please send them to us so we can address those and on July 14th, we'll make the recommendation that we feel is in the best interest of the children, parents of Murfreesboro City Schools.
Okay. Thank you. Good report. Any other questions on that topic? All right. Other business, Ralph, if you had a couple of things?
Yes, sir. Before I do that, I would like to introduce one of our new administrators at central office, Dr. Maryam Hill. She is the coordinator of teaching and learning. Mary, would you please stand? She, she is, used to be the assistant principal at Riverdale High School, but she comes and she has taken the bull by the horn. This is her second day and I've already gotten her to do investigations of, of claims and she's taken it and we're, she's going to recruit new teachers and help teachers.
We've done pretty well recruiting local people from the county this year, haven't we?
We're back in a thousand.
Okay, good. Thank you. Welcome aboard, ma'am. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
First item for the other business that I would like for you to consider is a budget amendment. And Mr. Anderson, can you take it from there?
Yes, sir. I think put at your place was a budget amendment. As you know, under state law, we cannot spend more money than you have approved for us to spend. We received yesterday from the, from the city for insurance, a property insurance premium and it will not impact us to the point where we have to change anything except we have to say, we're going to spend more money in the budget line for insurance. And so that's, that's in here. The other one was extended school program. When we laid off employees, that, it's kind of a double-edged sword. You don't have the salary, but you do have the unemployment compensation. And so because the salary's reduced, it went into unemployment, so we had to identify that. We've got, we had a higher unemployment amount. Again, it's, it's a whitewash on each one. It just, you know, one comes in, one goes out. So we just need you to approve it so we don't get an audit exemption.
Okay.
An audit finding.
Any questions, Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Anderson, so in the case of the Mr. Anderson, so in the case of the property insurance premium, the one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars, is, is that a surprise to us?
Well, the city, the city is, is functioning under, it's a business model of putting the expenses as close to the end user. We did not know how much it would be, or if they're even going to do it this year, because it changes constantly, and we switched over to doing our own insurance packages. We really didn't know that they had property insurance because we had it, too. And so when they sent us the bill for what they had under, because they, we can't insure the buildings, but part of their building insurance included property in, within that insurance. So we, we have to reimburse them for that amount. We just, you know, we just got the bill, we didn't know what to expect.
So we would not have been budgeting for this in foresight, seeing it coming to us, since we were paying our own insurance?
That's, that was our understanding, is we were paying it. Now, going forward, we'll include it now, but we didn't know that we were going to give it to us here after we had already approved our budget amendments.
So we can expect this to reoccur next year, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And by the way, we've reduced our insurance accordingly now to match up with the, with what the city's carrying. We adjusted that now to, so that they, they flow now nicely.
So this, this is not a, a major hit to our budget?
It's, it's not because we had savings in, in other areas, in savings, basically utility expenses, we cut over a quarter of a million out of our utilities, and that's helped us a lot.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve this. Mr. Ringstaff, Mr. Anderson, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the insurance premium payment of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eighty-eight dollars?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Discussion?
We need to get the amendment on, the, the budget amendment, the whole, the whole thing.
Okay.
The insurance is part of it, and it's blended into this.
Okay.
You better approve on the second page.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you. Okay. All right.
We just, we just needed a, a motion and approval of the budget amendment because that includes the insurance.
All right, motion to approve the budget amendment. Who made the motion? Wes did?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. All right, Mr. Ballard?
Just a general question, Mr. Anderson. How, how are we looking as, with the schools being out and all the changes that we've made for COVID and coming up? Are we, are we saving some money, or are we having additional expenses that we didn't see coming because of it?
Well, great question, it's a double-edged sword. We have saved money because we haven't had some expenses, we have spent more in some other areas. That's why we had so many little budget amendments the other, last meeting, where we moved things from one line to another and bounced it around. Overall, we use less fund balance this year than we have projected to use, so that actually helps us out moving forward.
With transportation, we should be well ahead and.
Transportation's saved because we didn't have gasoline expense.
Yeah.
We didn't have the, the same level of personnel expense in that. We did pay people when they were off, but we didn't have the overtime stuff, we didn't have all the extra programs that we run after school either, so that helped us there. Biggest, like I said, the biggest savings was our utility expenses.
Yeah. I can imagine, so.
Do we get to carry that over? Or do we have to return that?
It, it, it goes into fund balance, and that's it, you start a new budget year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Ringstaff, your other suggestion?
The second item, I guess a day or two after Dr. Gilbert passed away, the leadership team met, and we were thinking of ways that we could honor Dr. Gilbert's legacy. And one of the ways that we came up with was a recommendation to the school board to rename the Teacher Learning Center at Central Office, the big training room. We'd like to rename that to Dr. Linda, Linda, Linda Gilbert Teacher Learning Center, TLC, Dr. Linda Gilbert. And we would like to make a recommendation that the school board approve that.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question, discussion? I'm sure there is not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Anything else, I'm, okay. Now, we will meet Friday, am I right, by Zoom, eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock.
To hear from Dr. Garrett and.
Dr. Grissom.
Dr. Garrett, listen to me, Tammy Grissom, excuse me, to hear from her pertaining to meetings that have been held today, and my understanding, we told her this afternoon they've been very well attended, they were, they're very, very pleased, and things were many, many, many positive comments.
And they've also been able to go online to complete the survey as well.
Okay, all right. And that's on Friday of this week at eleven, and then.
July fourteenth.
We will come up with our criteria, and after that point in time, they can start advertising, and we can get this ball rolling more so.
I can't, on the fourteenth, the next meeting, is that, wouldn't, what part of that is the selection process? Isn't that, weren't we doing something?
I think it's just.
It's just schools?
Yes.
I mean, reopening?
Just, just schools.
Yeah. Fridays, we will, we'll determine the.
Okay.
The criteria that we wanted, a new director. Okay, Mr. Ballard?
This, that just popped to mind, the, and I don't know if Dr. Grissom has any input, but Dr. Gilbert was director of schools. Superintendent seems to be the common nomenclature for that position. But is, how did we get to director? Do we know?
That is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms.
Tennessee Code annotated changed the term superintendent to director. They mean the same thing, there's no real difference. I think it moved away from the elected office of superintendent to a board-appointed director of schools.
So is that across the state, and then?
Yes.
Superintendents are now directors of schools?
Yes.
And that's, that's been in effect two or three years, hasn't it?
Longer.
Probably more than that.
Longer than that, okay.
Well, my point in asking was, as a recruit is looking at the possibility of becoming a director or a superintendent, it might mean something different to them. Maybe I'm wrong, but the people, when they're looking for a position and description of the job, you know, what they're assuming is that, okay, well, this is director now, what's the difference between director and superintendent?
Nothing.
There is no difference, it's just terminology that the state decided to change the title from superintendent to director.
Okay, so.
So it might only be a concern for out-of-state people, then, to your.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, I just don't want someone to get confused with saying, oh, was that superintendent, or is that director, or does that mean director, I have to do so, you know, it's a promise, so, okay, so.
Surely they'll look at the job description when they.
If they can't figure that out, I don't know.
If they're from out-of-state, they'll have to get used to what Tennessee does.
They'll have to wear shoes here.
Not always. All right, any other business? Otherwise, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Goff, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
And good night.
Thank you.
See you Friday.